Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our first town board meeting of 2023. Yay, very exciting. And I would like to, before we start the meeting, just formally welcome Holly McCall as our new town board owner. So, welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Holly was sworn in right before this meeting, and there will be the formal inauguration ceremony tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM in Town Hall. All right, so that being said, I would like to open this up if there's any public comment or new business. If there's anyone online. Anyone?
Do I have to make a motion to?
Oh, yeah, we have a motion to open the meeting. Oops, God.
Can I?
My brain is still jet lagged. Yes, you can. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. See, I'm still jet lagged. All right, I hope everyone had a happy new year, by the way. All right, any public comment, new business, anyone online?
I don't see anyone with their hand raised, but if you do have a comment, please raise your digital hand. Nothing.
All right. So then, that being said, we are going to move on. Do I need to read the appointments?
You should.
Okay, so we have an organizational meeting, just for those of you watching, the first meeting of our year of the year, where we make various appointments, and we adopt a myriad of resolutions that you're going to hear tonight for things such as setting the official town bank and depositories, setting fees and charges, things like that. So that's what most of these resolutions we are going to discuss tonight are. A couple of appointments that don't require resolutions, but I did want to announce again that I've appointed Victoria Tipp, who is online with us tonight, as deputy supervisor for the year 2023. So thank you for agreeing to do that again.
It's an honor, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, and I hope you feel better soon. And I am also announcing the appointment of our town administrator Jill Simon Shapiro as budget officer for the year 2023. I know you were thrilled with that appointment, so thank you very much.
And surprised.
An honor, yes.
All right, so then we're going to move along to our organizational resolutions. So I thought we'll have Jeremy start, do the first page, although you could do the second page here, too. And then we'll move around here. Vicky, do you want to do resolutions, like read them? I figured you might not want to bother.
We'll see if we get to the end.
Okay.
I can skip the water one.
All right, I move to designate the Journal News as the official newspaper of the town of town for purposes of publishing legal notices during the year 2023.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
I move to appoint Keenan Bean, PC, as town council to rates described in the letter dated December 23rd, 2022, for one-year term to expire on December 31st, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to adopt the town Newcastle procurement policy for 2023 as annex year two dated January 2nd, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to adopt the following resolution, be resolved that the town Newcastle, pardon me, that the Newcastle Town Board hereby establishes the following fees and charges for fiscal year 2023 as per the attached fee schedule.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to set the mileage reimbursement rate of 65.5 cents per mile in accordance with the Internal Revenue Service, otherwise known to many as IRS, for the year 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. I move to adopt Robert's Rules of Orders, the official guidelines for conducting all town board meetings.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
I move to adopt a part-time salary schedule, part-time employee hourly salary schedule for the year 2023 as attached here, too.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to adopt the resolution that the Newcastle Town Board hereby adopts the salary schedule for full-time employees of the town of Newcastle as it appears and is appended to the 2023 adopted budget with the understanding that salaries for certain union and non-union employees are subject to further modification as a result of employee evaluations and contract negotiations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to adopt the meeting schedule for 2023 as included in the resolution, knowing that all meetings are held on Tuesday and will begin at 6:30 PM, except when otherwise noted.
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
I move.
Holly gets water.
To adopt the following resolution, the town board acting as commissioners of the Newcastle Stanwood Consolidated Water District hereby sets the basic district water rate for all water billed on or after January 1st, 2023, including water consumed but not billed prior to January 1st, 2023, at $91 per thousand cubic feet. The net usage rate to be billed to consumers within the district after allowance for the ad valorem assessment for water district charges and application of reserved capital proceeds from the sale of an interest in the water treatment plan to the village Pleasantville shall be $62 per thousand cubic feet. The town board finds that water consumption of more than 6,000 cubic feet by any particular water user in the district during any single billing period creates a substantial likelihood that penalty charges for excess per capita water consumption will be imposed on the district by the New York City Department of Environmental Protection and determines that a surcharge is necessary for water consumed or used in excess of 6,000 cubic feet in order to encourage conservation and offset any such penalty that NYCDEP might impose. The town board acting as commissioners of the district hereby sets a two-tier district water surcharge rate in addition to the net usage rate of $62 per thousand cubic feet for all water in excess of 6,000 cubic feet consumed or used by any user in any billing period and billed on or after January 1st, 2023, including water consumed but not billed prior to January 1st, 2022.
That should be 2023.
2023.
Yes.
Prior to January 1st, 2023, at $76 in $14 surcharge plus the net usage rate of $62 for each thousand cubic feet or portion thereof in excess of 6,000 cubic feet but less than 10,000 cubic feet. And at $81, which is a $19 surcharge plus the net usage rate of $62 for each thousand cubic feet or portion thereof in excess of 10,000 cubic feet. In connection with the assessment of the district for $991,739 of costs, the town board acting as the town board and as commissioners of the district informs the generation of $991,739 by ad valorem assessments against properties in the district and that such assessments are made and shall be applied by the district for costs relating to maintenance and repair of district assets and to meet interest charges with respect to the district.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're right.
Okay, okay, right. I move the following banks and accounts to be designated as official town Newcastle bank depositories for the fiscal year 2023 as reflected below.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move, pardon me. I move to adopt the following resolution, be it resolved that pursuit to Section 11 of the Public Officers' Law to bring about coverage of official undertakings for town Newcastle officials and town employees shall be fixed at $1 million, except that excess coverage of various officials shall be set as reflected below and that the form and content of said light bond of official undertaking be approved by the town council and be further resolved at verification certificate of insurance by nature filed for the following town officials, again, as reflected below, as reflected below.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you do the last one?
Hi. I move to adopt the annual financial statement that is in accordance with Town Law Article 3, Section 29, Section 10A. And in lieu of preparing an annual financial report, the supervisor and/or the comptroller be authorized to submit to the office of the town clerk a copy of the annual report, which must be submitted to the office of the state comptroller, and further that a notice that such report is on file and available for public inspection be published in the official newspaper of the town.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Please, Jerry, nothing else you to discuss?
Not very much. Not much.
I move to adjourn the organizational meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Oh, my gosh.
You did a very good job. All right, so now that the official organizational meeting has been adjourned, we are going to move to our first work session of the new year. Very exciting. And we're going to start off by discussing goals and objectives.
Right, so, um, thank you. So what the board has in their packet is an outline of the current projects that staff is working on. And they go from cleanup projects to water infrastructure, Chapico Performing Arts Center, that was before we had the last week, Ginnie Park Chapline Recreation Master Planner Sidewalks and ongoing road project that we have coming down the pipe from the New York State DOT and also the speciality. In addition to that, we've also provided to you a section of the Excel sheet that prior to, the prior town board had utilized identifying certain goals identified in the comprehensive plan as, I guess, goals that the board wanted to move forward on. It is actually a tremendous laundry list, and it's a lot to take in. But what we're really looking for from the board is to take a look at what our current projects are, see if there are priorities in there that you'd like the staff to be able to push ahead with. Are there certain areas that, you know, you think that we have, we've either overlooked or perhaps not given any attention to that you would like to see going forward? But we just do want to be mindful of the current projects that are ongoing. As much as our staff never says no to us and we, you know, they pull a rabbit out of the hat on a regular basis, there's only a certain bandwidth that we've got. And so we want to try to keep in mind that we have something called a PER. It's a preliminary engineering report that we have contacted for and that we're leading the delivery on. It's going to outline for us our 10-year infrastructure plan for water projects in town. It's going to be, it is a foundational document for us to be able to go out and get secure grants in the future. But it's also a roadmap for the town, for us to understand what are our priorities when it comes to our water infrastructure. You know, all those key things that happen below the streets that nobody thinks about until they don't work. So our water main breaks. We've got aging infrastructure, not just in our downtown that we addressed by our major, by our major street skate project years ago, but we've got that same aging infrastructure throughout town. So there are some significant projects, whether they be cement lining or water main replacements that we have on the schedule that have to be done. And so as the board goes through this, I'd like them to just keep in mind the need to have versus the need to have. And when it comes to water and things like that, that's a need to have. No one's going to tolerate dripping on the tap and having brown water, you know, smelly water, or worse, no water. So, you know, there's not a whole lot we can do about power outages when it comes to, you know, connective storms, but we, we've just had a taste, unfortunately, of some significant water main breaks around town that freeze and fall cycle and gets really cold. We wreak havoc on old pipes. They end up being brittle and they break.
Well, if I'm mistaken, it was roughly 20% of our main breaks were.
In the downtown. And that's, our pipes were literally rotting from the inside out, the outside in. The downtown is a swampy, marshy, acidic soil, and the pipes literally were getting it from both ends. And so even though our streets, we call it the street skate project, and it's beautiful, the gorgeous street skate that we got left with the impetus behind it was replacements of significant aging infrastructure, both water, sewer, and resolving some of our groundwater problems. So.
Is there another particular area that's a hotspot for the water mains? Or is it now just more spread out?
We certainly have some other areas. There are areas that, that we have identified already for water infrastructure, for water main replacements.
And over replacements, too.
Yes.
Yeah, the Meadow, Pine Cliff Ridge, we already ordered the pipe for that because there's a one-year lead time.
Right, and then we've got cement lining on other pipes where they're not quite ready to be replaced, but we can cement line them, which prolongs their life. And so we're looking at Kathleen Main, David Cross, Porsha, Valley View, Brookside, High Point Circle. And then just, this board may not be aware that there is a similarly aging water main that runs under the terminal tracks that has to be replaced, and that will be a multi-million dollar job. We are currently working with consultants to take and draw up plans. We're also looking at the MTA to see what their plans are going to require of us.
But there's a few iterations of that.
Oh, yeah, yes.
First below, then above.
Yeah.
Yeah, we thought we'd be going to be able to boil underneath it. Yeah, I don't know.
Did the MTA want us to get buses at the ready?
Yep.
Yes, buses at the ready, because if we, you know.
Disrupted the line.
So, yeah. With this, obviously, we're not asking for the town board to give us your goals tonight, but it was something we could certainly discuss. And just, we wanted to introduce it tonight, and we will, we will go through it in the next couple of weeks. But one thing, Jill, I did want to put in here, which isn't on here, is that given the potential building now of a bridge over the Sawmill Parkway and the, you know, train overpass by Chapico Crossing, it's something that if there are related projects that would kind of go hand in hand with that, like paving an area for parking lot that might coordinate with Chap Pack or if it's anything else that, not Chap Pack, Chap Line, or if there are any other things that we may want to focus on in terms of infrastructure that would be related to that, I'd like to sort of start thinking about that so that we're ready if and when DOT and the MTA come to us and say, this is a, this is a go.
Another question on that front is not just parking, but I wonder what impact just the potential development of a bridge would be to the location and existing piece of the chap line for where it comes to fruition. In other words, if the state came in and said, we'll put the bridge here, like it or not, and town would probably support it with a reason. If we had something existing in two years and in four years, the bridge is coming, do they have the ability as the state to sort of admit it to me and say, hey, sorry, I know it's a great path, but it's gone?
Well, I don't think the path is going to be gone.
I don't know.
No, that's not where the bridge would be.
I don't know.
But potentially the proposed parking area could be impacted.
Right, so it's on our radar. So anything that happens between now and over the next couple of years is going to take into account the potential for this to happen.
But the other thing that we may want to consider is perhaps that, yeah, that, that, yeah, and also maybe that bridge should have a pedestrian pathway as well so that we can make sure that, you know, people can get completed. It won't be on the other side of Roaring Brook Road.
Yeah, you walk across the road and you walk across.
Exactly. And so there may be further opportunities for pedestrian, a safe pedestrian crossing there, which would be fabulous. Yeah, but, you know, that, again, and while we're talking about pedestrian pathways, one of the things that, that we're waiting for the board on is some direction when it comes to additional sidewalks. So whether or not, you know, a sidewalk somewhere along 120 in the vicinity of where we're doing the water main replacement and the county is doing a trunk line expansion is something that the town board would like us to do some preliminary work on, sort of market surveys, reaching out to property owners, that area in, in the.
And we discussed that board members, by the way, a few weeks ago.
Right, right, and so we're just, you know, we're waiting for the board. No, everything sounds interesting, but, you know, is it something that you want us to move ahead with? So just so the, you know, staff understands, you know, what our priorities are for moving forward? Because there is preliminary work that we're going to have to do with all this stuff.
Personally, to the extent that we can, I would love to have sidewalks everywhere to the extent we can. Ones, the ones on 120 that you're discussing are actually more feasible than some of the other ones. I think they're expensive, as every sidewalk is. But to the extent that we can even connect our, each of our elementary schools to the downtown to encourage walking and connecting them to sidewalks, whether it be, you know, we're already looking at West Orchard now and a path that would take it into Millwood. And when we, if we can eventually connect Roaring Brook to the town and to the existing sidewalks, and we already have Grafflin connected to sidewalks, I think to the extent we can, that would be, that would be really great to be able to see parents walking their little ones to elementary school instead of needing buses.
Yeah, I, I completely agree. I think any way that we can get people out of their cars and safely walking is just a great thing. It gives tremendous independence to the kids. I mean, I know people that let me put up the Quaker Street sidewalk, you know, some of those sidewalks went out and got a dog because they walked it to town and, you know, people's walk. Any excuse to get a dog.
I have a question.
Sure.
The recreation master plan that's on here, what, what is this?
It's basically done.
It's basically done, and it's going to be rolled out shortly. I expect the recognition, I think it's still working on a people document, and so they're putting the finishing touches on it. I don't know if committee assignments are formalized or not.
They're forthcoming, but they're pretty close.
Okay.
I have to talk to, we talked briefly about what committees you might be interested in.
Right.
So we just need to go through that again. So we have to everyone to re-up their.
Right, so I, I would fully expect our rec commission liaison along with members of our recreation commission to make a presentation to the town board. So that's going to be presented soon.
So here do we start then? Was it 20, 21? Where did we get the money for that? Do you remember, Lisa, 20?
During, I want to say it was.
Pre-COVID?
It was COVID.
Either, it was not pre-COVID, I don't think. I think it was either 2019 is when it was started by the rec commission. And then I think the master plan, the master plan committee of residents was definitely during 2020.
Good for them, a little time.
Yeah, we're excited to see. So again, a foundational block in it for us to know where the residents' priorities are and also gives us the ability to take and go out and grant. Excited to see.
So I'd like to ask a question about that. I mean, obviously, it's so important for us to have, you know, clear vision and goals and priorities, obviously for us and the staff, but for the community as well so that we can be transparent about where we're going. So I just want to ask the board how, how we would go about this because I think that we, we could have done a better job of this last year. And so just getting, going through the regularly scheduled work sessions, I'm not sure of the best way to go about that in terms of just talking to each other about where we see the board going. Should you think that we should schedule some sort of retreat? I mean, how have you seen this done over the years, Lisa? Because I'm accustomed to having retreats and really doing a very strong job about, you know, setting a vision, so.
So we haven't historically spent town time or money on retreats, but what we've done in the past is had every town board member really email your top five priorities to the rest of the town board members. And, you know, we definitely don't operate the way the school board does.
Yeah, well, just to say, it's not a matter of spending money at all. It's really just setting a time to meet and to talk.
So we've always done it at work sessions, but what, what we've had town board members do is email your top five priorities for the coming year and then ranked in order of priority. And then we've gotten together and looked at those, you know, made a spreadsheet because it may be that everyone's top one or two are the same. So we've gone through that, and then we've discussed it at work sessions. Because we want that to be something that's public, that everyone can hear our deliberations on that and what we're discussing and what's important to everyone.
Right, okay, then.
For what it's worth, I really like the, using the framework from the comprehensive plan to categorize and.
Yeah, it's, it's good. It can be a little overwhelming sometimes with the way it's written because it's so small.
Yeah.
But it, it is important that you can see the priorities that were set forth in the comprehensive plan, and then we really figure out how we want to prioritize those. All right, does that make sense?
Does that make sense? Are we emailing them?
Yes.
Yes, if you could, yeah, if you could email everyone. And I think maybe what we're going to do certainly for the month of January is during our work sessions, we'll set aside time each work session to go through them and review them and see what it looks like. And what we will end up doing is sort of revising the goals and objectives. I mean, you'll let, let us know if this is the format that you guys prefer to work with or not. And we'll take and revise it for, for this board. Yeah.
I'm just curious if it makes sense to hear from, and I don't know if this would be planning or building or whoever, what they think our priorities should be. I wonder if the people that are like out doing inspections and, you know, I could pick three things on here that sound really, really nice to me, but I really don't know if that's like the best use of our time, of our money. Like you're talking about water, for example, and how important it's going to be to fix the infrastructure below the ground. That's not pretty, that's not fun, right? It's like I just put a sump pump in my basement. That's not what I wanted to do with my money, but it's what I had to do with my money. I don't want to pick five things on this list that are beautification projects but really don't serve the long-term interests. Exactly. And I'm not an expert. I'm wondering if maybe it makes sense to hear from the people that are, you know, drilling the holes and fixing the pipes and, and get, you know, maybe two out of the five things that are like this really needs to be done and we shouldn't put it off any longer.
Well, when it comes.
Well, that's sort of what we're relying on Jill to do with because they have let you know in the staff meetings what the priorities are there.
So that's reflected in here.
So, so the current projects?
Yeah.
These are our, this is what staff is doing.[1673.11]
Okay.
So, you know, Bart is, Bart Commissioner Public Works, he's the guy that was charged with making sure that our water system, you know, is operating the way it should. So um although there's a couple of things on here that we weren't anticipating, like when our, you know, standby generator takes in clothes and all of a sudden we're stirring around and we need another one. Um, you know, he's the guy who's on top of that. So all of a sudden, understanding no matter what priorities you give me, when something like that comes up, it's gonna get bounced to the top and everything else is just gonna have to, you know, filter its way down. Um, but I just want the board to know what the things that we're working on. Like the pedestrian bridge, it got taken out by Asaias. Um, that ended up being a priority project because people have to be able to walk from their homes into downtown. They're already walking. I can't have them walking along non-existent, you know, on seventeen. So, on one twenty rather. So, you know, these are things that we're absolutely doing already. But if the board can let us know, like in the past things, they made a determination, you know, after the fact, not popular, but the form-based code is the way they wanted to proceed. Once the board gives us that direction, professional staff can assist the board in getting there. If you guys decide that, you know, we would like to um spend some time and energy doing sidewalks and taking a look at some other sidewalks, we will help you to get there. Um, if you decide that, you know what, we waited a long time for the rec master plan, let's see what comes out of that and see. That's really important to us. Um, you know, recreation is one of the things that's identified in the comprehensive plan. It's also something that we just spent all of this, this time and energy doing. We really would like to, to pay attention to its findings and see, you know, what goals out of there we can identify. And then we'll take a look at some funding sources and see where we're in the best position um to get monies. Because that, that's the other thing, every year the consolidated grants um opportunities change their focus. And so what staff spends a lot of time doing is taking a look at the priorities that the board has identified for us and taking a look at the funding opportunities and seeing where they, they best align and seeing where our best success may be.
Okay, great.
Um, so I, I appreciate you telling me that, that, you know, I don't know what, you know, I'm gonna pick brands to have. That's fine. Pick brands to have because then we'll see where our grant opportunities are.
Okay.
And try to find a funding source for them um and see how they align. Um, when it comes to the, the need to have things, we're gonna take care of that because that.
Okay.
Yeah, we rely on the experts for that.
To do that, okay. So don't worry.
Thank you.
That was a great question.
All right, any other questions?
Okay.
So I think everyone should take a look at this, um, you know, current projects plus the goals and priorities that were in the comprehensive plan. You can see things that we've kind of been working on and striving toward. And then send to the whole town board your top five priorities. And then we're gonna use the next number of work sessions to really discuss those. And we're gonna use it kind of like a retreat, but we're gonna be stuck in this conference room. But we'll be able to talk about those and, and what we think makes sense. All right, sounds good.
Okay. Um, Ed, the next thing we had on our agenda was the procurement of professional engineering services. Um, what's on there? Um, I'm sorry, professional engineering services on an emergency basis for the replacement of a generator at the middle of water treatment plant. Um, as the board is keenly aware, um, we are in the midst of trying to replace that uh generator. We have, uh, we've rented a generator at twenty thousand dollars uh a month. And we um are asking the board um to do something that's a little bit unusual. And that is to allow us to procure these engineering services um on an emergency basis. Normally, we would spend a couple of months going out to uh issuing an RFP and then waiting for the bids to come back and then evaluating them. That alone, that two to three month period is gonna set the town back between forty and sixty thousand dollars. Um, so we would like the opportunity to be able to um grant, um, well, award uh the engineering services um on this emergency basis to a firm that is familiar with the water treatment plant, they have designed the original um generator. Um, where am I reading at?
Um, I, that's exactly what I was gonna say. It is a little um unusual, but uh the numbers just make sense here. Um, it, it is an emergency in the sense that e- every month that passes is another twenty thousand dollars. And the failure of the original backup generator certainly was unforeseeable and unexpected. So I, I, I think we're still in the realm of the emergency as contemplated by the general municipal law. Now, ordinarily, you'd have to do this RFP pursuant to the town's procurement policy. But there's an exception under general municipal law for emergencies and people criteria here on that. So the resolution that's in the packet lays, lays out the facts and, and lays out the reasoning in terms of why the, the criteria in the GML are set, set aside.
Well, I agree, and I think this is definitely a need to have. Uh, we need to have a generator on our water treatment plant. So um I, I think that the, the faster we can get this done, you know, we, we get one step closer to getting a permanent generator there and uh and no longer having to spend the twenty thousand dollars per month. Uh, I think it's really important, so I, I'm definitely in favor of that.
I guess the piece we should add that I forgot was that the uh the replacement generator that we're ordering has a one-year-plus lead time. And that clock will not start until the shop drawings for that piece of equipment have been reviewed and approved by the town. That's what the contract is going to impart, that's what the contract award will cover. Reviewing and approving such shop drawings so we can start that one-year lead time and get the genera- generator here sooner rather than later.
Absolutely.
So, yes, he said Sawyer has been instrumental in our operation of the water treatment plant, they helped design it. And uh they um, they've, yeah.
And we've always been happy with their work.
We, we more than likely would have ended up with them at the end of the process anyways.
Right, that.
Because an RFP is not solely based on the price, so based on their reputation and their knowledge of industry.
Right, in the operation.
Mm-hmm.
It sounds like it's pretty clearly, you know, okay as an being, as an emergency.
I think the numbers are compelling.
Yeah, I bear me.
Thank you.
Very good, sure.
All right.
Okay, um, the next couple of things that we've got on our agenda are administrative items. Um, we've got our payment of claims, it's a retroactive approval, uh, and checks dated on December thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, authorization to purchase uh two police vehicles.
The ones we ordered last February are still not in yet.
We already authorized that.
You didn't reau- why did we need to reauthorize?
No, you just reauthorized the purchase that we ordered in February, which we weren't able to get the twenty twenty-two vehicles in because they didn't produce as many.
Right.
And so you reauthorized that purchase because they had raised the price.
Right.
So for the cars we were to purchase in twenty-two, that's what you authorized. These are two that are now coming out of the twenty-three budget. And we're trying to get those in as soon as possible, hopefully get them in this calendar year.
Got it.
Yeah, we haven't received a review of the other ones, but we have a vehicle replacement schedule that we're trying to abide by.
Even though there's a lifetime.
Yeah.
It's significant, so.
Yeah. Um, authorization to approve agreement with Northeast Recreation, they're one of our partners for um um our special needs population. Um, we've got an authorization to rebid um for two designated dryers at the middle of water treatment plant. Um, this is the one where we were unable to. I'm sorry, I can't remember what happened, I just wanna go through the. Oh, um, the documents were reviewed by eight vendors, but we actually didn't receive any proposals by the closing time. So um, that's an omission is uh, yeah. Um, so we're just gonna need to uh, to take a new betting and see if we're more successful next time around. Um, and the last on the administrative items is authorization to approve the release of a cash fund agreement through web administration plantings. So um in the course of uh planning board approval of the new development, there's offering uh plantings um that the planning board or URB may require that they normally make. And we asked them to put up a bond either two to five years to guarantee the success of the plantings. Um, this was a five-year bond, the plantings have survived, so we can take and release the money that was guaranteeing them. Um, the next are proposed actions that we've got, so we've got a new payment. Okay, so we've got our payment of claims, um, we're gonna authorize uh the resignation of um um our civilian um parking enforcement officer. Um, authorization um to void services, so these are all the resolutions. But um I know that one of the ones that the board hasn't spoken about yet is the draft resolution in the packet um for commencing litigation against the Chapelby Central School District, and this has to do with the electronic sign. I wanted to open it up to the board for any comment or discussion that they have.
So, um, I don't know that we've talked about this in executive session before.
In work session, yes.
I mean, in work session, I'm sorry. So, can I summarize really briefly?
Of course.
So we have, as many people know, an electronic sign right in front of uh Bell School and the train station. And that, a number of years ago, was the result of a joint venture, I would say, between the school district and the town um to each paid fifty percent to purchase the materials and construct this sign so that each, you know, municipal entity could use that to publish notices and, and other items. So we started as kind of community outreach and something we thought would really bring the town together. Um, this community corner, which as many people know announces birthdays, things like that. Um, the school district had asked us to make uh some changes to that, which we did over the last year where we stopped using last names, we said the town of Newcastle wishes instead of the school board, we didn't want any implication of the school who's wishing anyone a happy birthday or anything else. Um, and there was a contract which would have expired or it would, would have evergreen.
Yeah.
Unless uh one of the parties ended it. So we recently received a notification from the school board that they wanted that um agreement between the entities to end. Uh, what that essentially means, and correct me if I'm wrong, would be that each entity, the school district and the town, would then operate their own side of the sign um, independent of each other. Right now, they kind of, any announcement cycles on both sides of the sign and predominantly the town has been the one putting up any notification, whether it be for the school district or the town. Um, so now, according to the, the contract, upon termination, each entity would operate their own side of the sign. Um, instead, the school district has taken it upon themselves to cut power to the sign um so that the town can no longer use it because they still had issues with the birthday messages despite uh our trying to negotiate with them. Did I summarize it correctly?
No, I, I, I think that's exactly right. The um sticking point um to me is a little bit hard to explain uh because as you said, the town did agree to make changes to the, the, the uh policy with respect to posting messages. We received um in December a proposed modification to the agreement. It's called the IMA, intermunicipal agreement. And what the um school district proposed doing was eliminating the provision that you just described that would allow, in the event of a termination, each party to independently operate one of the signs. They proposed removing that entirely and instead having language that would create a cliff where the IMA would expire in about a year, next, yeah, end of January of twenty-four, unless one, both parties agreed to extend it. So we, they, they would move us from this model, I think you aptly described as a joint venture partnership, because after all, it was a shared expense to creating the signs. We'd get out of that model and sort of have this one-year period at the end of which it all could end. And the town could lose that, that investment and that control over the sign, one of the signs. So that's where we left with it. And I, you know, I, I took the time last week on Friday to lay all this out in a, a letter to the district's council that uh just walks us through what the town has tried to do to accommodate the district's concerns. Um, o- one of the proposals that we put forward in mid-December was, let's do a tolling agreement. I, I suggested doing a tolling agreement because at that point, the, the town board had had its last public meeting of the year. It seemed to me that there wasn't gonna be enough time to get a new agreement in place by the end of December, and there wasn't.
And the school board also had their last meeting of the year.
Right, so I, I, I suggested a tolling agreement that just would have preserved the status quo for an extra month or so just so that we could figure this out. And that wasn't acceptable to the, to the school district. Instead, they insisted on their, it was either their agreement or no agreement. It was either accept all of their changes, no negotiation, and create this one-year cliff where it all could end for the town or else they were gonna cut the power off. Frankly, I don't think any of us believed they actually would, but they did.
Right.
That's who we are tonight.
And let's also be clear that the posting of those announcements was not in violation of the IMA. Um, and in my personal view, I, I, I think that they are not being good municipal partners to the town of Newcastle. I think it's something you've all seen, I forwarded some of them, but we get emails all the time thanking us for, for this and kind of bringing the community together, how happy it's made children. We allow anybody to post this, they just need to contact us. If they don't have an email, they can walk in, if they can't walk in, they can make a phone call. There are many, many ways, they can stop me on the street. There are many ways to reach us, to, to announce this. We don't discriminate based on anything. Uh, the only, I, my knowledge, and since I'm the one who approved them, the only uh announcement we ever said no to was when someone wanted to wish their mother Happy Mother's Day and we said, well, everyone's gonna wanna do that, so we just did a, a blanket Happy Mother's Day and everyone was happy with that. Um, so to me, I, I mean, I would love to come to an equitable compromise with the school board. I, I think in the last proposal, we said, fine, we don't need to put this during the week, we'll only have it on weekends. And my understanding is they said it can only be Saturdays. And I thought that wasn't equitable because there are people who, for religious or other reasons, maybe aren't driving around on a Saturday. I don't see why it couldn't also be on a Sunday or a school holiday when school is not in session. I, 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 and I think I could speak on behalf of the rest of the town board, are willing to kind of bend over backwards to accommodate while still, you know, accomplishing the goal of trying to bring the community together for happy occasions. And um I, I would like to negotiate still with the school. I, I'm very disheartened that they felt that their, their only um, the only thing they could do would be to cut power to this sign that is now dark for everyone. And um certainly, having been a contract attorney, because an agreement expires does not mean the termination provisions in that agreement, which were the consideration for entering into the agreement in the first place, expire. So you don't get to decide, well, the agreement is done, we're now gonna cut off power because it's on our property. Um, you enter into a contract for a reason.
Well, the contract is very clear on that point.
And it's very clear.
It says essentially, if there is a termination, then the town will operate its sign and the school district will operate its sign.
Right, so I, I think this is in poor taste and honestly, very in, in significantly bad faith. And I, I think it would have been very easy to negotiate this, to continue this discussion that we've been having. Um, but I, I don't know where we move from here. Have you gotten any other indication from their attorney that they're willing to do anything other than completely shut off power to this sign?
Uh, n- nothing. I, I sent the letter on Friday, I did not get a call or an email since. Now, the, the resolution, it's on the agenda for tonight for discussion. Um, and you're discussing it, it doesn't mean to say that you must adopt it tonight. Um, the other thing I'd point out is I, and I think I mentioned this, but if I didn't, I've actually, in the draft, uh indicated that our letter to the district is attached to the resolution. That letter, in my view, lays out how we got here. And I'd like to think that there's still an offer that we wouldn't be forced into a corner where we'd have to ask a judge to decide. But technically, under the town law, um, it requires a resolution to commence for a ten, to commence litigation against any third party, even the school district. Hopefully, it doesn't come to that, but that's why we needed to draft the resolution.
Right. I mean, yes, just one quick thing, I would hate for both sides to be spending taxpayer money, which it's predominantly not a hundred percent, but significant number of individuals in the school district are also in the town. So they're, they would be doubly paying tax dollars to commence litigation. But I think if we had to go there, I would. I would just hope that the school board would hear us and try and negotiate this without uh needing to go to court. But yes, go ahead.
So I just wanna say that um this is the first time we're discussing this in work session, but it is not the first time that we've discussed this. Um, and I know on, based on our private conversations, that none of us ever thought that we would get here. We all hoped that this matter would be resolved. And as Ed said, the terms in the contract are pretty clear, it's pretty straightforward. This was a shared cost, a shared venture uh by the town, the school district, the taxpayer. Um, the terms are clear. And Ed, you, you, you attached your letter to the resolution. There's been a blanket refusal by the school district to be reasonable, to be accommodating. I'm appalled, I'm embarrassed, I'm embarrassed that we're discussing a resolution about whether we have to initiate litigation against our school district over an electronic sign in town. Lisa's right, we receive emails all the time from our residents. Lisa's right, we receive emails all the time from our residents asking to please mention their child's birthday or something happy and exciting. And we've received a lot of thank yous about how their child was so happy to see their name. I know I love driving through town and seeing friends, friends' names and and being able to wish members of our community a happy birthday. And I just want to say that I'm so disheartened that we're sitting here talking about this, especially when there seem to be so many other more important things that our district should be worrying about right now. And yet they've chosen to unplug an electronic sign that is shared by our community. So I just wanted to get that on the record. As a mom, as a CCSD parent, and and as a town board member, this is not the example that I want to set. This is not how we work civilly to resolve disputes, and I'm very disappointed.
So I'm, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Jeremy.
I was gonna say, I think it behooves me not to say anything, but I don't know, he's not saying anything. I do think it's quite rich that there was an accusation by someone about how certain people's tenure, there was a a a poor relationship with the school and the town board. And, oh man, the town board was evil. I I think it's, you both said it very well. You don't pick up your toys and go home because you don't like something and unplug the sign and, you know, that's not how things work. If I recall, when the Spades were here working on this project, I don't know if the schools, school board representatives were here working with us when they were coming in and sharing design plans and things like that, but town board certainly and town staff and town dollars went into this. And I think the response here is, let's figure this out. What can be so catastrophic and horrific to post Happy Birthday? You need to unplug it, it's disappointing, that's not how you work together. So I would hope that you don't have to sue, nobody wants to sue, it's a waste of dollars, a waste of energy, it's a waste of emotion. Let's play together, come back to the sandbox.
Yeah, you know, I I guess I would just want to say that the prospect of going into litigation against the school district over wanting to say Happy Birthday is something that I think is absolutely untenable. It it's frivolous and it's irresponsible to our taxpayers. I I think that there are definitely ways to handle this issue without going in that direction. Their unplugging of the sign, while it's provoking, doesn't indicate that we weren't close to coming to an agreement. Because prior to that, I, you know, they had asked that we limit our Happy Birthday messages to Saturdays. And I don't think it's that far of a stretch to add Sundays to that. Or or, you know, days when schools aren't in session. I I think we simply weren't done with negotiating. So we weren't really far. And the fact that they cut off the sign is another matter. I I don't think that's related to us being far, I wish I wish they hadn't done it. I'm shocked that they did. But it's more important to our residents to have a sign, to see what what community events are occurring and not have litigation. I think all of those things are much more important than us having to wish people a happy birthday. Now, that doesn't mean that we wouldn't be able to do that going forward. But, you know, to to start raising litigation as a prospect before we terminate negotiations, I think, I think would be irresponsible. So I think what we do is continue the negotiations. We tell them to turn the sign back on. We could have a stay on wishing people a happy birthday. Lisa, I know you don't want to do that, but I think it's important for our residents to get the other messages. And then come to resolution on the Happy Birthday issue. You know, whether it's Saturdays or Saturdays and Sundays, and then move on from this. That's what I think. I mean, to then discuss a resolution on litigation, I think is extreme.
You know, I I agree with you. I also think that it was extreme for them to shut off an electronic sign that has messages that are important to the whole community.
I agree, I agree with that.
That they did that, to me, as I said, I think is incredibly bad faith. It shows a complete disregard for our community as a whole. And, you know, I think forgetting whether they're birthday messages or not, that's not something you can do when you're negotiating something in good faith as a steward of our community, which they are.
Yes, but here we are, we are at that place now, the question is, what are we going to do?
At some point, both sides need to come to a table. And we've been sitting at this table and done nothing to walk away, yet they have. So at some point, it can't be the town completely telling the school board they can do whatever they want. At some point, the school board has to give a little bit also and realize that they are part of a larger community and start living within that community.
You know, I think Jeremy said it well when he said, you don't just pick up your toys and go home, right? And there's been a lot of efforts made here by this town board, by Ed, to, let's talk this through, what can we do? Okay, we'll give you that, how about you give us this? And it's just been a blanket refusal and threats to unplug the sign, which we all said, no way, it's not going to come to that. And yet, here we are. So I I agree, it's just, it's it's in poor taste, it's in bad faith. And, you know, it it's hard to negotiate when when you just are hitting a brick wall over and over and over again. I think we've been more than fair and more than reasonable. I I'm I'm really, I just, I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around the fact that we're here and this is what we're talking about tonight. It's, it seems like a waste of our time, too.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, Ed, did you sense that we were done with the negotiations? I think we were in the middle of it, and then we reached the holidays and now we're back.
It it it's difficult to answer, Vicki, I'd like to say yes, but the district's actions really don't match up with yes. Because what the district
Right, right, the turning off of the sign is really unfortunate.
Well, not only that, but their refusal to sign an agreement, even just staying the termination while we, for a month, while we continue to negotiate so that we can come back from the holidays and continue to negotiate. And they refuse to sign that.
I I'm not sure that that's what Ed told us exactly. But I don't know what I can or cannot say here.
That, I think you did just say that.
Yeah, I I had actually drafted a tolling agreement and asked the district's council to bring it back to his client. And the tolling agreement would have just pumped the brakes for about a month, left the sign on. Neither side would have waived any rights or made any concessions, it just would have carved out a little bit of breathing room for us to figure this out. And that wasn't acceptable to the district for whatever reason.
Right, you did say that.
That would have been a show of good faith to just continue negotiations with the status quo. And I'm sorry, but this isn't the first time, we're one of the only municipalities that has to pay our school district to use fields for our children. I mean, there, this is not the first time that we've had unreasonable negotiations. And I I think this is just the complete utter
Right, so the question is, what are, what are we going to do? And starting a lawsuit, I'm not sure is really the best next step. So, so putting aside the turning off of the sign, which is hard to do, but let's, let's do that. What I'm asking Ed is, did you get a sense that the negotiations were at an end? If we assume that the turning off of the sign does not mean that, and I don't think it does.
I I've gotten out of the business of trying to predict how the district is going to react in this situation because I've been wrong each time. None of us thought that they would actually turn the sign off. I never thought that they would say no to a tolling agreement. I look, I I think the board has a couple of options before it. It 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 could either adopt the resol, vote on the resolution. And if it carries, that doesn't mean that tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, we're going to be in court. We're not, right? It's going to take a little bit of time and that'll create maybe an opportunity for further discussion. Or to put this on the agenda for next week and that'll create a little more time for that discussion to happen. But so far, you know, I guess that I I my phone didn't ring, I didn't get an email from the district's council. I I don't know where we are, Vicki, that's the honest answer to your question.
To me, the fact that they refused to sign a tolling agreement is dispositive. Not that they shut the sign, but the fact that they refused to say, we will continue this for another month.
I did, yeah, so I'm still, to some degree, catching up on this entire discussion. But I'm really disappointed that we're coming to the point where we're discussing whether or not we would commence litigation. I really feel very uncomfortable with that prospect. I think, Vicki, you articulated it pretty well. To me, yes, shutting the sign off is absolutely an escalation. But I feel like if we now come to a place where we're passing a resolution to pursue litigation, I feel like we're escalating instead of de-escalating. And maybe there's another opportunity to have the boards talk to each other instead of just the attorneys before we take a drastic action, see if maybe we can pull it back. I mean, I, the idea of CCSD and Newca, town of Newcastle residents paying with their tax dollars to fight with each other is just horrifying to me.
I agree, especially since it's mostly the same people.
Yes, yeah, no, no.
And they're paying on both ends.
But I'm just, I'm, I'm really
You know, it's really un, it's really unnecessary, especially when the sticking point is just the town wanting to say Happy Birthday to people, which as nice as it is, is not an essential function of a town. And also the fact that
Sorry to interrupt you, but I'm not even sure I agree that that's the sticking point anymore. I am actually very unclear as to what the sticking point is. I think the school district is not clear themselves what the sticking
No, I think it was very clear, Ally, before you came onto the board. Their only, their problem was that the town was wishing a Happy Birthday to residents and they felt that these were individual messages. They had, they had reasons that we may or may not agree with, but that was, that was the impetus for this entire controversy.
But I think it evolved a little bit, yes, Ed?
In terms of their
Of of, sorry, there was other issues, not just the Happy Birthday. I mean, there's a general, larger feeling of safety and concern, but whatever that means.
Right, there was a mention of safety, there was a mention of whether it says the town, you know, who's wishing why.
It was about the Happy Birthdays, though.
But now they're just saying they want a hundred percent control over the sign, too.
Well, the big change that I I saw as a sticking point when I communicated this to their council was the idea that, again, we were going to create a cliff about one year out. And at that point, this could just all go away in terms of the town's ability to have any sign. That wasn't acceptable, uh, uh, in my view. It is, since it's a shared asset, it was a shared cost, it's a shared amenity. And I just don't see a scenario where the town could put at risk losing that asset because it couldn't come to an agreement a year from now as to another extension.
Right, I have no problem with the school board operating their side of the sign, the town operating our side of the sign, exactly as it was laid out in the agreed-upon IMA that both entities executed and negotiated. To me, that is a fine outcome. If we can't agree, we can each have our own side of the sign, period. But they've taken that to a completely illogical conclusion by basically saying, well, no, if we can't have it all, we're not going to let you have any.
So I I I'm, my view is that we don't pass the resolution today. But I don't think that the school board should interpret that as a unwillingness to go that route if we have to. It's more a willingness to do what they did not, which is responsibly act when there is a dispute and work through that dispute. But if we have to go that route, we spent people time, we spent tax dollars, there is a legally binding agreement. And you don't just get to pick up your toys, and I would say it was a little sophomoric, but it's a middle school, so that may be a little less than sophomoric, to do what they did. But we also want to have a good working relationship with them down the road. Let's try to foster that again. But they should know that as much as we don't want to do it, there is a willingness to do that if we have to, that's my view.
I agree.
I agree, and I I, and I think we, none of us at this table wants to be suing the school board. Not one person wants to do that. And I am always willing and open to negotiating and coming to an appropriate conclusion together, a compromise. But that compromise is not, let's turn off the sign. That compromise is, let's sign a tolling agreement where we give ourselves a couple more months to come to that compromise. That's what we should be teaching our children in school as well.
I mean, I I feel the the emotion, the anger and the frustration, too. And I just, I'm just hoping that maybe there's a way that we could just talk face to face again.
Well, maybe by us having this open conversation for our residents, for any members of the school board that might be seeing this, this isn't what we want. No one wants to pursue litigation, we're hoping to resolve this matter. We'll shelve it for a week or two. But I agree with what Jeremy said, we don't want to take that route, but if we have to take that route, I think we will. It seems we're going that direction.
So tell me what the board ambitions the next step to be.
Is it a week or, I think timeframe is the next question.
Yeah, so I think, let's table this discussion. I think a week should be ample time to hear from the school board as to whether they're even willing to negotiate. So I, I mean, I have reached out to a number of members of the school board. I did not get that sense that they're willing to negotiate, but I hope that they are. But I will reach out again, I think, Ed, you should reach out to their attorney. I'm happy to set up another meeting with the school board if they want to do it as a group. I'm happy to meet with Jane, the president of the school board, as I have done in the past, to try to negotiate. But I think in the ensuing week, let's reach out again, that we are willing to compromise, willing to negotiate. And we would like them to turn the sign back on in the, in that time period as a show of their good faith. And let's see where we can move in a week. Not that we have to have a decision, but just that we need to hear from them that they're willing to continue discussions.
So the 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 requirement that we, that the board adopt the resolution is something that I think is going to dictate the pace. We can't really work in one-week increments. By next Friday, the thirteenth, is when we would put this resolution back in the package for consideration on Tuesday, the seventeenth. The timing sounds a little weird.
I think that makes sense, that also gives the school board another continuing
That's two weeks, do you mean the tenth, today's the third.
Right, but
This week's gone, pretty much.
This week's, right, I mean, so I'm I'm thinking that we
We win Wednesday, Thursday.
Not give them a Friday, this Friday, the sixth, as a deadline, but we would have to know by the
But that's two weeks without a sign.
It's so hard to work
Look, can I just, can I just say, I I just want to reiterate my my prior suggestion that, Ed, you continue the negotiations with them because that that was not really terminated, okay? We never got a response on on our response to
I don't think, Vicki, it was terminated when they refused to sign a tolling agreement and shut off
The tolling agreement is something different, that's not, that's not the IMA.
No, no, the tolling agreement was saying, we're just going to continue this while we negotiate. We're not going to do, take any actions so that we can continue negotiations. They refused to sign that and then shut off the sign.
No, 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 but they didn't, they didn't terminate the IMA.
Yes, they did. They sent notice and terminated the IMA.
All right. What I'm trying to say is that the IMA is not, was not validly terminated.
Yes, it was.
Because we still have our
They sent notice.
We have our side of the sign. Well, they didn't do it in a way that was according to the terms of the IMA.
Correct, it was validly terminated, but their actions under the, their their actions are not abiding by the terms of that contract.
The underlying actions, so they didn't term, what I'm trying to say is they didn't terminate it properly. Okay, because if they, if they had, we would still have control over one side of the sign.
Okay, yes, yes.
So it, so that was not done properly. So what I would say is we continue, you know, I keep repeating myself, but they never responded to our our counterproposal for the Saturdays and Sundays. So we weren't quite done with that conversation.
Was that, was that subsequent or prior to turning off?
That was right before, but
That was right before, and then we got into the the winter holiday That was right before, and then we got into the the winter holidays. And that's what interrupted the negotiations. And in the meantime, they turned the signs off. So we're conflating the two things, okay? So I don't think we were done with getting our counterproposal.
Very, very generous to your former colleagues. I think they're turning off the sign and refusing to sign an agreement saying they will be willing to continue to negotiate is pretty clear proof that they no longer wish to negotiate and have ended that relationship in a way that is actually not legal and does not comport with the contract and the IMA that was
Right, I know.
Executed. So I I think you're being very nice to them, but I I
No, I'm not being very nice to anyone. I'm just, I'm just trying to find a way for us to move forward in a way that is not irresponsible to our taxpayers, gives the community back a sign, which which is an important asset. And you know, if you negotiate.
Or, yeah, I agree with you. I think we are saying right now and we will continue to communicate that we are willing to negotiate with them. They have chosen to take this step to shut off the sign. It's actually their action. They need to turn it back on.
Right.
And if they're not willing to do that, we can't move the process forward.
So so since we're not, to 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 Vicky's point about not wanting to cost taxpayer dollars and then go through this process, Lisa, then why don't we just put this on, whether we act on it or not? Put on the, put this resolution out there next week, and we can always kick it over. Can we kick it over? But it's not going anywhere. It's large and it's real here. Why why not just keep it on the agenda?
Yeah, we can do that and kick it over and hopefully we will.
No one wants to actually make the vote, ask, you know, take the, take the time to vote on it, but it's there.
And look, it's not just happy birthday messages, right, that aren't going up now. It's it's school games, it's basketball games, it's going to be, you know, any announcements. None of that will be on there.
But Lisa, if we, if we stop if we refrain from putting happy birthday messages on the sign, I'm sure that they would turn the sign back on. So I think the thing you have to decide is whether the happy birthday messages are really important enough to hold up this sign for the community.
I didn't turn off the sign, though.
Yes, but we, I, of course you did it. I know that. But the bottom line is that the the happy birthday messages are the sticking point rightly or wrongly for the for the school. And I'm not defending anybody here. I'm just stating the facts as they are. This is what we have to deal with. And the question is, are we going to to hold up the sign for these happy birthday messages?
If, I think if I thought, Vicky, you're right. I'm I'm not, you know, I'm new to this, but since I've joined the town board and we've talked about this a few times, I'm just still not convinced that is the sticking point. I'd love to get a clear indicate, like, we're we're like inferring all of these things, but at the end of the day, there was a refusal to have an interim agreement, and then the sign was unplugged. There's really not much left to infer other than they're not interested.
No, there's nothing to infer. I mean, the the discussions were only based on the happy birthday messages. If you watch the joint town board meeting, let's see that.
I don't agree. I think that it it became, there there was mentions about safety, there was mention about
Those messages.
No, it wasn't, because, Vicky, I will tell you
Right, about the days, if it was Saturday, if it was Sunday, it came up, it like snowballed into a few other things.
Did, but it also became, they still wanted their messages up. So I gave an example. I said, how about when Brandon Lee was drafted by the, you know, major league baseball? That congratulations went up, that couldn't go up then. And they said, oh, well, that could go up because it's school related. No, that is the same vein as congratulating someone in our community for something that is of interest to the community, that has nothing to do with taxes are due, or there is a basketball game. So they want to put up whatever messages they deem appropriate, congratulatory or other, but not allow the town to do the same thing. And I specifically used that example, and they said, well, that would have been a booster's thing. No, it wouldn't. It's somebody who graduated, who no longer has any affiliation to the school, but does to our community. So it's the same exact thing. So it's
I know, Lisa, but
They want to be able to just have complete control over what goes up on that sign.
I don't know about that. What I do know is that from the very beginning, the problem with, for them, were the happy birthday messages. So I don't wanna conflate that with anything else. I had extensive discussions with them about it. You did too, Lisa. We had a joint town board meeting. It's all in the public record that that's what the sticking point has been. And rightly or wrongly, and I'm not defending anyone, I'm just saying that until we have that issue resolved, I think it's really important for the town and its residents to get it signed back. And for the town, for the time being, we can have a stay on these happy birthday messages, get the sign back on, and then continue to negotiate it.
Well, hopefully the school board will turn the sign back on and be willing to negotiate. Period. So I think we
Would you hold off on putting those happy birthday messages until we have that negotiation?
No, because then they have complete control over everything.
Saying no?
We, they have no, then we have no negotiating stance at all. I don't think I would, but we can continue to discuss that offline.
Why don't we leave it there?
Yeah.
And and so it'll be on in the packet this Friday, um, if that's acceptable to the board, and we'll deal with it next Tuesday.
And in the meantime, I'll reach out to the school board again. You'll reach out to their attorneys, and let's see if we can get them to come to the table.
I'll reach out to them as well.
I I think we should have one person reaching out. Vicky, I don't think you should be reaching out. I prefer to do that. As the supervisor of the town, I will reach out to the school board president. And let's try to continue.
But I can't control um whether they call me or not. So they could call any of us, and any of us would would have the right to talk to them.
I'm not saying not. I'm just saying proactively reaching out, I don't think is appropriate. I think it should be it should be the head of the town board to the head of the school board, and let's, and our attorneys, and let's try to let's try to work something out.
Work out the issue.
Yeah, okay. All right.
October twenty fourth is my birthday.
I'm not telling anyone.
All right, so we can move on?
Yes, let us move on.
Revolution? All right, I'll I'll shoot away.
We're proactive approvals.
All right, uh, yeah, sorry. Okay. I move retroactively approve the payment of claims amount of three hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents. Listen to the summary, AP AP check register and detail voucher detail report, both dated December thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. Checks were printed and distributed each claim listed on Friday, December thirtieth of last year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to accept the resignation of Amanda Patterson from position of animal warden, parking enforcement officer within the Newcastle Police Department effective December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. The town would like to thank Amanda sincerely for her great service here.
Second.
All in favor?
All right, this is regarding a resolution to award a contractor Hazen and Sawyer for professional engineering services as we just discussed during our work session. Um, in lieu of reading all of these clauses, this relates to a backup diesel generator um, that had a failure, um, and we have to replace that generator. As we go through these wherestes, I will then lead to now therefore be resolved that the facts support requirements of GML section one oh three four with respect to emergency procurements. As the additional rental cost to the town would incur by the following uh, following the RFP process, we inevitably exceed any potential cost savings that might be realized on the engineering contract by requesting multiple proposals. And I think you had said it was about twenty thousand dollars a month, correct? Um, further resolved that the town administrators authorized entry into a contract with Hazen and Sawyer for a total not to exceed costs of eighty-six thousand five hundred, which contract shall be subject to review and approval by town council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so I move to authorize the purchase of one marked twenty twenty-three Ford Interceptor SUV police vehicle for the total amount of fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and four dollars and seventy-two cents, as well as one slick top twenty twenty-three Ford Interceptor SUV police vehicle for the total amount of fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twelve cents as per the Westchester County contract RFB dash WC dash two-two-three-three-six from Nielsen Ford in Morristown, New Jersey. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to authorize the town supervisor to execute the twenty twenty-three interagency agreement with the Northeast Westchester Special Recreation Inc., located in North Shore, New York, along with neighboring municipalities. This agreement provides a collective program of therapeutic recreation services for individuals with disabilities residing or domiciled in our area. For twenty twenty-three, the town of Newcastle's municipal match contribution is thirteen thousand five hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-one cents to provide these services to thirty-three Newcastle residents. This annual contribution is contributed and payable as as um below, as listed below.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wanna take all that?
Sure.
Um, I move to authorize the rebid for two dustcan dryers for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant.
That was an easy one.
Um, and I move to authorize release of cash bond agreement in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, which has been posted by the African Accord to Sarl Street to ensure that all wetland mitigation plans have been satisfactorily maintained for a five-year maintenance period, which completes requirement as per the wetlands coming.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. I move to authorize provisional promotion of Brittany Knight leader to position of recreation supervisor two with the Recreation Parks Department at the annual salary of eighty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars thirty-six cents effective January, uh, two thousand twenty-two. Is that retroactive or is that? This promotion is provisional based upon the scheduling and successful completion of the Westchester County Civil Service exam.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Night.
Good night. Feel better.